Mr. Waldinger.
Here.
Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Mills.
Here.
Ms. Corble.
Here.
Ms. Peters.
Here.
Mr. Selepus and Mr. Magrina had previously indicated to me that they would not be in attendance. Traffic impact fee members, Mr. Dolanich.
Here.
Mr. Swatzer.
Here.
And Mr. Claxton previously indicated to me that he would not be in attendance.
Okay. The traffic impact fee and CIP update. So Mark, are you going to present this?
Actually, I have Mike Mudge from TPD here. He's our traffic engineer and he's been the one who typically updates the traffic impact fee for us. So he'll be presenting his findings for the fee as well as the recommendations for the program.
So this is just building off of our last update, which I think was November of 2023 was the last time we did an update. And if you recall, we didn't update the fee last time. I think the last time the fee was updated was, I would say it was October of 2022. This is just our annual update. The MPC allows council to at least, no, no less than annually, but there's no requirement that you update this, but Peters Township pretty much does it on a regular basis, to annually request the impact fee advisory committee to review the plan, the impact fee itself, and make recommendations for revisions. There's different reasons you can make revisions or updates to the plan based on new development, completed projects, delays in implementing the plan, significant changes in land use assumptions, changes in project cost, for example, cost index of construction based on something like the engineering news record, construction cost index, and then significant changes in project revenue from different sources. The plan has a various number of sources, local, state, and federal. This is just to refresh everybody's memory. This is an outline of the township where we have two different traffic analysis, or two different zones, the northern and the southern. The thick blue line is the meandering line that winds around the middle, where we have it geniously outlined for the northern and the southern impact fee areas. And the yellow areas are developed parcels at the time, which are not in the impact fee district because they are already built and we don't think that they would ever redevelop. They're mostly single-family residential homes or like township property and things like that. Good. Just kind of an update, this is kind of like a, as I was going through with some of the folks in the office, they said this is kind of like the audit of where the, the impact fee program is right now. There are two actual accounts for the northern and the southern TSAs. As I mentioned, the fee right now is 1750 per PM peak hour trip that we assess for new trips when people come in for land development. They paid for that fee at the time of their building permit application. And this is, this is accurate as of the end of November. You could see the fund balances in each of the northern and the southern TSA, approximately 246,000 in the northern, 479,000 in the southern TSA. Underneath that is the total amount of fees we've collected over the lifetimes, and that ranges back since 2008, when this program was started. And you can see on that, that's based on a number of trips we've collected over the years. So in the northern TSA, there's been 907 trips assessed on all the development in the northern TSA since 2008. Southern TSA next to it in that middle row, 1.4, 1.4 million dollars on 1,003 trips since 2008. The monies are placed into interest-bearing accounts. You can see how much interest the, the accounts have made over the years. And then the final line is how much the expenditures have come out of the accounts on projects that we have spent in the township over the years since 2008. I can't tell you since the last update in November 2003, we haven't spent any money on any projects. The last major expenditure was Rolling Hills Drive. You want to go ahead? Things that we're proposing for changes for this year in 2025, one of the things that I mentioned kind of at the beginning is you can change, make changes in the plan when project completion dates aren't occurring. And I hope everybody was able to get an exciting copy of the report that I sent out. It's great reading, especially one of those tables with all the little text in the middle. The one table is, number five is kind of the guts of how this all comes together with all the little type and all the years and the writing and the numbers. But what you're trying to do is you're trying to keep the build year of these projects out in advance because there's requirements in the MPC that if you let a project slide and you don't construct a project by a certain build year, you risk having to give refunds to people. But you're able through this mechanism of doing updates to push the build years out because you're not getting to these projects because you're not building them. So what we're, what I was doing here with the project list, we were recommending pushing out every project, adding five years to all the projects on the list, pushing them out beyond 2030. The one project that we weren't changing was project number eight, which is the McMurray Beebout-Thompsonville Road project, which we don't need to change because Pendott's actually going to finish that supposedly this year. One project on the list was completed last year, which was Valley Brook and Beebout. There were originally a matching amount that the township had set aside at one point, but Pendott had completed the project and did not request a match from the township. So no funds were expended by the township on that project for the roundabout. This time around, we've added no new projects. A couple of things, when we go through and crunch the numbers, there's an allowable amount of things that you're allowed to charge for, the way the MPC sets out the program. And if we were, if we were to charge the maximum amount of impact fee based on all the projects we have in the program, we could have an impact fee, you could see up in that top left up there, 7,400 in the northern and 6,400 in the, in the southern district. But then below that, you could see what some other local municipalities around here have. Cranberry ranging at 1,800, Richland has one of their districts at just over 1,900, and then some other townships, like South Fayette is one of their districts at 1,418. What the township has decided to do is the township purposely underfunds their impact fee obligation. And like right now, we have a fee of 1,750, and that, again, that was updated in 2022. So looking at that and taking a look at some things, like at the cost of a construction inflation and things like that, the recommendation that staff came up with and that they're presenting tonight is, is looking at increasing the fee from 1,750 per new PM peak hour trip for new development and raising that to 1,900 per PM peak hour trip for new development. And that, that's a 2.78% increase since our last adjustment. And then one of the things we do, if you're looking at that big chart that I was talking about with all the different projects on there, we obviously don't fund all the projects, but this is the projects where we are showing impact fee monies assigned to it right now. We have to do this to show where we're putting impact fee money as we collect it, where would we spend the money. This is something we have to do to show where the money's allocated, but in reality, there are managers' regulations that at any time in between our updates, the manager, Paul Hour, is able to flex the money around. So if a project's not on one of these lists comes up, he's able to go to council and say, hey, I'm moving money from one project to another. He can move money around on the program. But what we try to do is we try to show what we think may be somewhat of a priority or what we think may be projects that could be possible here in the, well, near, near term, zero to five years out. So some of the projects, like in the northern TSA, we allocated some money to those intersections on Route 19. The township put in for a Pendott Green Lake Go grant that has matching monies to do some traffic signal improvements on Route 19. The next ones on Sugar Camp, those are the one, those are some of the intersections where we're seeing increased traffic because of some of the new developments that we've seen in the last couple of years. Same thing with Beebout, Beebout Just About, Beebout and Bauer Hill. Those are two intersections where we're seeing traffic growth. I know Beebout and Bauer Hill is the one where we had the four-way stop put in a few years ago. It's getting closer and closer to, I think next year Pendott's coming in with like a, one of those overhead intersection flashing warning devices, and that's like the next step is going to be a full-blown traffic signal. That's where you're at, like, they put the flashing intersection beacon up where you're 95% of the way to a traffic signal. So they're going to get there at some point. And the last two in the northern TSA, the McMurray and the Peters Township School District, Middle School driveway, that was one where the property across the street at one point was being looked at by Ryan Holmes, I believe. And there was a project in there to try to get that, if Ryan Holmes came in across the street to try to build a left turn lane for the middle school on McMurray Road. And then Meredith and Frobe, at one time, there was a development proposed there. We were looking at realigning some intersections up in there to try to take away that blind intersection up there. So right now, those last two projects, there's no movement on those projects. I think those developments have gone away and for the time being, but we've left the projects on there in case they do come back in the near future. In the southern TSA, I know Venetia and Beebout's been a, an intersection that's been talked about for the last couple of years, probably in the last three or four years, been a couple of developers down in the Venetia area. That's kind of been a hang-up for them, that intersection. So I know that's, that's one that's going to be an issue coming soon. Again, Beebout and Bauer Hill, it's actually in both the northern and the southern TSA because the, the line between the district actually runs down through the middle of the intersection. So we're allocating money from both districts for some future improvement there. And then the other one is Water Dam and Gally, which is, we had that laid out there at one point, and we were working with Pendott, and the project just kind of stalled. So we're, we're kind of waiting to see if we can get some more money allocated to that. That was going to be looking at putting turn lanes on Water Dam, possibly a traffic signal there at some point. So that one, I think that one actually, the Water Dam and Gally might be the, the most near-term project that we might see. So I won't hit that again. And that kind of comes to the conclusion tonight, what, you know, if you guys have questions, I would stop now and take any questions that you have. What we're asking you to do tonight is recommend to council changes to the, to the code, it's chapter 241, tables five, six, seven, and eight in the report that I gave out tonight. They're actually referred to as attachment D in chapter 241 of the code. We would also amend section 241-3L where we talk about what the maximum impact fee that we could levy, and then 241-7A where we would recommend that the impact fee go from 1,750 to 1,900 per trip. So that was a lot of exciting stuff. So I'm done, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer questions or talk about just traffic in general, so.
All right. Well, I'll skip the traffic in general discussion. But so is, is the reason that there were no expenditures since November of 2023 because the expenditures that we had thought that were going to go out ended up being covered by, by Pendott and they didn't ask for the matching funds?
That and then just projects that we just haven't, there's no projects right now that are actively being pursued. There were some that were some potential developer projects, and those developments have gone away.
Okay.
And then we did have some money set aside, like those couple of projects around the bout, and then up here where Cohen is, the township had set aside some money. At one point, Pendott was going to ask for a match, but they're, they're covering their own match now and the township isn't being asked for any money.
Okay. So with those, if, if they had asked for that, what are the reasons why there's been no?
Right. So the nice thing about impact fees is when Pendott was thinking about these projects five, six, eight years ago, the township was able to approach Pendott and say, hey, we can help you with your match if you have a problem. And then Pendott got excited and they put the projects on the tip. But since then, they were able to find their own money and they said, hey, township, don't worry about it, we have the match, so, but thank you.
Sure.
So it was, you know, that, this kind of money helps you leverage other stuff.
Right.
So now we're trying to leverage some money for these Green Lake Go applications for the traffic lights out on 19, because some of those traffic lights are going on 30 years old.
Right. So is there, so that money that had been, so the, the projects?
Yeah.
For which we had allocated or, or put on our project list that Pendott didn't ask for the money for, was there specific budgets that were established for that? And if there were, are we reallocating those monies to something new or just pushing them to the ones that are already on the list?
We, they just get shifted around to other projects on the list.
Okay. Okay. So that was monies that have been shifted somewhere else at this point?
Right.
Okay.
And if you really want to see what that list, part of that list is, if you go to, if you really want to get into this, so on table six, if you look in the northern TSA and the southern TSA, there's an assigned impact fee column in the middle of each of those.
Okay.
That's the, that's the list of where we slide money around. So at the bottom, we know, we know that from now until the end of time, if we, if we vote for the 1,900 tonight.
Right.
We know that we're going to collect 4.3 million dollars at the bottom.
Gotcha.
So we can slide the 4.3 million around in that column, except that the gray highlighted items, gray highlighted lines, we've already spent that money, so we can't slide that.
Right.
So we can slide that money in that column anywhere we want at any time.
Okay.
So that's what that, that's what that is. So if a project comes in, so that those top ones, we have 150,000 for those intersections on Route 19.
Yep.
If they're a little bit less, we'll slide that money and move it somewhere else. If they're a little bit more, we'll steal it from somebody down the list and move them up. And that's something that Paul can do in between these updates that we do.
Right. So then as far as the, to make sure that there's no new projects, is that something that every six months you, you talk about and decide that there's nothing else really that looks like it needs? Is there, is there a committee that takes a look and says, hey, what should be put on this project? And is the reason that there are no new projects because we think we're good?
Well, the, the project list is pretty long.
Right.
And that's the problem. We're never going to get to all these projects. So really, the only new projects that ever make it to the list, and I will tell you, the original project list from 2008 goes down to, so it goes down to project 22. So projects 23 through 28 are projects we've added since 2008. And those projects typically come up because of a developer coming in and saying, hey, I'm building something, but it's off-site or it's in front of my site, and it's just, it's a bigger problem, it's not just me. So they work with the township and they decide like, hey, we're going to, you know, put some money to this, we're going to get a project on. And it's something that's, that we didn't think about back in 2008, but this new development is different than we originally thought, and it's causing something new at an intersection. Like Water Dam and Gally, back in 2008, was not a big a problem as it is today.
Right.
But now that all the stuff that's going on there, North Strabane, Primrose School right on the corner there, that intersection is just blown up. But in 2008, that wasn't even on our radar.
No.
So things like that get added over time.
So then similarly, if a, if a developer or development would kind of pop up that had not been anticipated, you're free to then add new projects to the list, and, and projects are free to be, to, to leapfrog other projects if it becomes.
Yes.
So even though something's not on now, if there will be a development that would come in, it could be added then, this isn't something that's static for a year and we can't do anything about it, if something would become either emergent or.
I mean, we'd have to wait until next year's update, but we would, and that's how we've done this in the past. We would sit down, we would take the time, we'd do, you know, cartoon drawings, estimates and stuff.
Sure.
And we'd bring it to you and say, we want to add this project, we'd add it and then allocate the money.
Okay. And then my last question is the, so the, the 2.78 interest increase, I'm sorry, not interest increase, was, was the 1,900 a ride deck because we wanted, because the decision was made, they want to go really no more than 3%, but more than 2%, or did the number come in first and that happens to be the percentage increase? I ask that because since we haven't raised this since 2022 with just material costs and construction costs and labor costs and everything going up, I'm a little concerned that 2.78% increase is not enough from where we are. And then I was also curious about what those, what those fees are in the, in some of the, the other districts that are, are townships right here in the South Hills. So as we go down 19, what are the traffic impact fee costs for like Upper St. Clair and for Mount Lebanon and for Bethel Park? And as we go down 19?
So I can tell you that the 2.8-ish, whatever that was.
2.78.
So since 2023 to 2025, construction costs cooled down. So in those last, so in that last, since our last update, it's one, it's like 1.82% per year.
Mm-hmm.
But the year before that, back to 2022, when we did last increase it, that was a crazy year. I think it was like over four, almost 5% construction, like construction was really taken off that ladder. So like if you go back to the last time we updated it, it's just under 3% if we look at construction cost over that time. So I think that's what we're, that's kind of what we did. We, we said, hey, it's been under 3% and we just ran, we just rounded it to 1,900.
Okay. So if, and I could be wrong about this, but I thought, I remember that when we raised it in 2022, it had been a while and we were kind of behind the times as far as what our impact fees were, and we raised it a little more than what we would have initially thought we were going to.
Right.
Because we made kind of a leap then to try and catch up.
And I think that, I think the kind of consensus was, I mean, this, I think that when the staff discussed this last time was maybe like, it's kind of like an every other year to really, maybe not raise it every year, but maybe it's in every other year kind of raise the impact fee. Now then to your point about other municipalities, not a lot of other municipalities do this. If you're a built-top municipality, an older municipality, like a, like an Upper St. Clair or Mount Lebanon, you don't have a lot of what's new, new development. So you're not going to make the money on the new impact fees. North Strabane just passed one, and they probably did it way too late, so their impact fee, and I've got to look it up again, but it's, it's a low impact fee.
I saw it when you, when you had it up there before, yeah.
Yeah. They, they missed the boat. They should have done it a while back. So they, they've missed all their, their big growth. So their teams are all gone.
Sure.
So those ones that I had, that's pretty much the biggest ones in Western PEA that have it. There's not many that have it really.
Okay. So Upper St. Clair and Mount Lebanon don't even have them?
No.
Okay. Okay. Same with Baldwin and Bethel and then heading, I guess, further south as well.
I'm trying to think if there's anybody else that's really not on that list.
South Fayette's on there.
Family High. Like North Fayette, North Fayette's not on that, or North Strabane is not on that list. I knew they just passed them last year, but they're on the lower end from what I remember.
South Strabane also is working on theirs, but it's also on the lower end.
It's on the lower end as well. Right, right, right. Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure. Any other questions?
So I think what we're looking for today, though, is some type of motion with the recommendation, yes.
So would there be recommend, I guess, three actions?
Well, I would make it one motion, but I reference those three bullet points.
Yeah. I'll make, I'll make a motion that the Traffic Impact Fee Committee, we recommend to, I guess it's council?
Yes.
That we make a motion to accept a five-year, in a tape, a five-year pushout on the tables. Number two, that the impact fee be raised to 1,900, and that to accept that, was it table six, seven, eight you said, Mike?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's right up there. If you want to, if you want to read the bullet points, actually, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that would be the cleanest thing to do. Sorry.
Well, if I could see that well.
Can we just make a motion to adopt the staff recommendations?
I think that works.
You're the attorney.
I'll accept that. Sound good?
Yes.
Accept the recommendations of the, of Mike and the staff.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Great. Okay. So this meeting's adjourned then. We'll roll into, if you guys want to leave on the traffic impact fee, feel free to. We're going to go into our regular meeting for February 13th, Peters Township Plan and Commission. Jim, can you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Selepus and Mr. Magrina had previously indicated to me that they would not be in attendance. Mr. Waldinger?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Ms. Corble?
Here.
Ms. Peters?
Here.
Can I get a approval of the January 9th, 2025 regular meeting minutes?
Sure. I'm moved to approve the January 9th, 2025 meeting minutes.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to introduce to the public Leslie Peters, our new alternate on the Peters Township Plan and Commission. Welcome aboard, Leslie.
Thank you.
Jim, you want to talk about how alternates work on the Plan and Commission?
Yeah, sure. Jeff requested me to kind of just go over this since we do have a new alternate, Rochelle's also been bumped up to a regular member. Per the MPC, alternates aren't only supposed to vote if it is necessary for quorum to be reached. So given the fact that we have three regular members here tonight, typically the alternates are not supposed to vote. That being said, they may participate in the meeting as a full member in that they can ask questions, make comments, address their concerns on any of the projects. It's only when it comes to the time to actually vote on the items that they are, they revert to their non-voting state.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. So next on the agenda, is this the Cohen markets, or public comment on, on agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move to old business. Cohen Market Site Plan, continued consideration of application for site plan approval from Cohen Markets, Inc. for the construction of a convenience store automobile gas service station at 801 East McQuarrie Road in the mixed-use activities center district.
Yes. What you have in front of you, as you so stated, was the, a site plan for approval for a five-pump gas station slash convenience store combo with a takeout restaurant. This plan has been before you guys in the past. I believe it was back in April, you guys had reviewed it at that time. We also had sent it to the zoning hearing board for a special exception for the addition of one extra pump, which they've received approval for. Also, since last time, a majority of the outstanding comments that staff has had, those have been addressed. And the other important thing to note, and we'll see it on the site plan in a second here, is that the overall footprint of the structure has been reduced from previously, I believe it was either 56 or 5,200 square feet, and now it's down to 4,600 square feet. So with that said, there are still a few issues remaining, and we'll go over them shortly here, but those are mainly minor issues that we have left. So real quickly, again, here's the site plan. Looks very similar to what we've seen in the past. This is the, now the 4,600-square-foot restaurant, convenience store. We also have five, five gas pumps out here in front, and of course, orienter, I want you to note that this is East McMurray, and this is Thompsonville Road here. So the structure they're proposing is a 4,600-square-foot structure. It'll have the restaurant and the convenience store in it. This is a reduction, as I noted earlier, and I believe it's down from 5,200 square feet. And in addition to reducing the square footage, they also reduced the number of parking spaces. They are now down to 25 parking spaces. Access to the site is from East McMurray. There is a driveway split pretty much in the area, maybe a little bit north of where it is currently, off of East McMurray. And then this will be a new driveway that is slid further down Thompsonville Road away from the intersection with East McMurray. The plan also calls for some landscaping here along the, I believe it'd be the western edge.
Yes.
To provide a buffer. And stormwater is being conveyed first to this particular facility here, but there's also a line that takes some of the flow out to the street, and then there'll be an underground system that the, the developer will work with the township to build. So based on these changes that have been made so far, staff is recommending that the plan be approved. We do have some conditions mainly resolving the outstanding issues. From my standpoint, the, my one last condition I had, or really was a question to the developers, if they could turn off one of the lights at the time the business closes, and that is this light right here, I believe, light number 45. They are already proposing turning off several others at the close of business, which is, I believe, 11 o'clock or so at night. I'm just asking if they turn that one off as well. And then I believe as far as the issues from the engineers, those are also minor, mainly getting outside approvals from outside agencies. I don't believe we had anything else in review or.
That's correct. It's just a collection of outside approvals, party approvals.
So, and, and the PTSA also have one minor comment regarding providing for a grease interceptor. So with that said, we are recommending approval of the plan conditioned upon these conditions here. We do have representatives from Cohen that can answer any questions or provide any additional information as needed.
Mark, did you, I think we're talking about the traffic impact fee. What's the additional traffic impact fee on the site?
I believe it was 17.5. It should be noted on the plans itself.
So it's on the plan?
Seventeen five.
Because sometimes we typically, David only typically sits on on the conditions. Because sometimes we typically, David only typically gets on the conditions.
Yeah, it is, but if it's on the plan, I would say...
Yeah, as long as it's on the plan.
The other thing we sometimes do is we'll also put it into a site plan improvement agreement.
Oh, okay, that's worth it.
And that's where we also put it. And really, for the owner's sake, all that agreement says is, here's what you are going to do, and it's usually based on the plan. So it's very basic stuff. And I think you might have even seen a template of it already.
The gentleman from Cohen wanted to come up, introduce himself, talk about the plan. It seems like you guys have been here quite a bit, and staff's made, got all their comments pretty much resolved.
Good evening, my name is Chris Peters. I'm with MDM Surveyors and Engineers here on behalf of the applicant Cohen Markets. I'm serving as the engineer of record for this project. Mr. Holgren, presented to you, our driveway location is going to be opposite the relocated Litter Suite Circle. We have a new driveway accessing Thompsonville Road. We're taking the existing use, basically rearranging the components, expanding that store to better serve the changing market, and we're adding that additional pump and rearranging the canopy for the sake of access, and again, to better serve the customers that are coming through. We have, I believe, addressed all of the comments, and with the exception of having that light turned off. And I believe the packet that you have with you has two lighting analysis provided. One is a full illumination during business hours, and that second will show a lot of zeros on the illumination, and that'll be the off-business hours. I believe that light is off in the off-analysis.
Okay, and on the plan itself, it looks like it's on. There's little asterisks next to the ones that you're turning off.
Did I not asterisk them?
Correct.
Then I am incorrect, and I will amend the plan. That light is to be turned off.
Okay. So just to be clear, 45 will be turned off?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we'll make sure it's on one way or another.
Yeah, the only lights that will be on in the evening are going to be the building-mounted fixtures and the lights at the public driveways. Those will be the only ones.
Right.
Can we talk about the light around the canopy not being on or being on?
There will be no light around the outside of the canopy. Yeah, the original proposal did offer, I think, a backlit canopy, and with our discussions between Plan and Commission and zoning hearing board, the applicants agreed to do that.
So it'll just be downward?
Correct.
Just the downward lights?
Correct.
To light up that area, but nothing that would project?
Correct.
I will point out that that's a note on the plan, that that colored banding around the canopy will not be there.
And just for the public's information, the fifth fuel tanks were approved by the zoning board.
Yes, sir.
And as it sits here, this is a permitted use, correct?
Correct, yes.
So this is, we didn't have to go through conditional use, this is a permitted use.
The only part that wasn't a permitted use was the gas pumps.
Any other commissioner comments? Any audience comments? I think you guys did a great job of really meeting the neighbors' needs and the township, what you did with the lights, all the landscaping and everything.
Thank you. We try.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the Cohen Markets...
Now, this is final.
Oh, this is final, sorry. I will make a motion to approve the Cohen Markets Site Plan with the conditions set forth in February 4th, I think this is supposed to say 2025 memo, right? Right? I'm looking at the right memo. 2025 memo from the staff, which includes the five conditions set forth therein, and with the understanding that the developer has agreed, and there's an agreement to turn off the fifth light that was discussed at the meeting today.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Woodbrier Estates Residential Development Preliminary Plan.
Yes, this is also a plan that's been before Planning Commission a couple of times. First off, we saw the final plan here at the last, I believe it was January 9th or 10th, where the plan was tabled, 9th. Prior to that, we actually recommended denial of the preliminary subdivision, which council then ended up approving the preliminary subdivision based on a number of conditions being addressed. So now we're here at the stage to review the final plan, which accommodates all those conditions of those approvals, as well as this current version addresses many, but not necessarily all the comments that staff has. We still have some technical engineering details that need to be ironed out. We do not believe this will actually, when they are ironed out, will change the overall design of the plan, but it definitely should be taken into account. To give you an idea of what the plan looks like, again, this is a two-phase plan. First phase, Phase One, will include 49 single-family homes. The second phase, which we're not actually reviewing today, but I'll just point out, is listed right here, parcel A, and this will be for three additional single-family homes. But the 49 homes of Phase One, they'll range in size from about a third of an acre to almost a half an acre. The plan does call for three new roads to be built on the site, as well as the extension of an existing road from, we've seen it, Woods called Wildbrier Drive. This will extend into the proposed subdivision. In terms of stormwater, we have two facilities proposed. We have one on the eastern side here, as well as one down on the southern side, that is directly adjacent to Peters Creek, which is where ultimately all the stormwater will drain to. In terms of looking at this and reviewing this, we did have some comments still that need to be addressed. We had the fire chief take a look at this, and he would like to see, I believe, two, possibly three of the hydrants be relocated. I don't believe this will be an issue with him. We can have the developer respond to that. There's also some geotechnical items that need to be addressed, as well as some storm sizing, or some sizing of the stormwater system that needs to be provided so that our consultants can do their final analysis of the stormwater management report. And then there's a couple of minor things, such as we need names on some of the sheets for the streets, and we need outside approvals from HPDS and DEP and HOP. So our recommended action is that we do have Planning Mission recommend to council approval of this plan, and that would be conditioned upon all these, basically resolving all the outstanding issues from my letter, Gateway's letter, and Mr. Mulder's letter regarding this plan, as well as addressing some of the comments from LSSE that were provided on behalf of the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority. With that, I'll point out that we have a representative from Woodbrier here tonight. He can answer any questions.
You want to please introduce yourself?
Good evening, John Schleicher with AMS Engineering. And just very briefly, in addition to the technical items, which were, you know, getting everything buttoned up, there were a few discussion items last month with the Planning Commission and some concerns that were brought up that we have addressed. So in addition, again, to those technical housekeeping items, the Wildbrier Drive temporary cul-de-sac that's in the existing Sienna Woods plan was originally going to be a traffic calming item, but the residents, or the resident along there has requested that that be constructed straight through. As it was on the Sienna Woods recorded plan, it was intended to be removed. So we've revised the plans to remove that and, you know, remove the paving and replace with lawn. We wanted to be specific with what that entailed. And then there's an existing storm drain or drains in the neighbor's property at, is it 112 Wildbrier Drive, that will be extended to the new edge of paving. That was one of the concerns. And then we've added buffer trees to a double row of evergreens between our last lot in the plan, 121, and the same lot in Sienna Woods, 112 Wildbrier Drive. So there's a double row of evergreens that's going to extend back in the 25-foot buffer from Wildbrier Drive back to an existing woods line in that buffer that is to remain undisturbed. We've added lighting details and photometrics to the plan, and Rocco is not here tonight. He had a question on the one intersection alignment with Wildbrier Drive and Carmen, which is that little connector road. So we've clarified that, and I think the questions that he did have were clarified with the revisions. The fire hydrants, yeah, this is the first review from the chief, so we'll certainly, you know, make those changes. And we did relocate a fire hydrant so that there was one on both the north and south side of that same intersection I just pointed out. The question or concern was, let's have a fire hydrant on each side so that, you know, in the case of emergency, the hose isn't, you know, going across the intersection so the, you know, other traffic can still potentially get by. There's a question on the size and capacity of the existing interceptor sewer all the way to the south where we're tying in. That was a resident question, and so the Planning Commission asked that we look into that. That's a 15-inch line. The extension out of it to services development is 8-inch, and we have received the capacity letter from Peters Creek Sanitary Authority. We had that previously, but just to confirm. And that was everything, again, in addition to the technical items. If there's any questions...
Was the, and you might have said this, and I might have missed it when I was shut off with your paper, so if you did, I apologize, but Mr. Gunnar, who's at 112, Wildbrier Drive, had some concerns regarding the sun pumps and worrying about that in his area. Is that something you took a look at?
That's the drain from the sun pump that we're going to extend to the edge of the new...
That's one you're going to extend, okay. And have you had a discussion with him, or have there been any communications with him, or has council, or not council, I'm sorry, has staff had any discussions with him about that?
We have not had any discussions with...
Mr. Gunnar?
Yeah, Mr. Gunnar, thank you.
Okay, all right.
It is our intention, though, that the developer will put it back to some satisfactory to the landowner.
Okay, but you said you've made a specific change in order to address his concerns? That's the extension?
Yes, yeah. And we have notes on the plans with regard to restoring the removed paving to match existing grade and to be lawn.
Okay. Do you understand that, too? That that would resolve the specific issues or questions that he had? Okay.
Mike, can you summarize? I know that you provided a letter, but you didn't see any traffic concerns relative to traffic ingress egress to and from Venetia Road?
No, their traffic study, they didn't warrant any turn lanes or traffic lights or anything like that.
Okay.
And that also reviewed the traffic. They're in the process of getting their HOP, and when they submit, we review the HOP plans also, so...
Okay.
So one of the other things that I think we requested last time was that the gentleman here in the second row, you would have a conversation with him to discuss his concerns. Has that taken place?
We discussed it outside after the meeting briefly, but I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think that the biggest concerns are in Phase Two.
It is in Phase Two. So you want to come up and introduce yourself? Neil Mickens, 109 Autumn Way and Venetia Road Properties. I think that my concerns of Phase Two affect me on both of my properties. And I was looking for clarification on what this reconstructed wetlands would look like right here next to my property, and what it looks like right here next to my property when they remove the water from the site and how it gets past the site. I know how much water's there. I pretty much know where it's going right now. And all the water that's there, it's going away, but it's not going away where a house would sit. And who knows how much the flow will increase when you open it. Right now, it percolates through the ground. I know how it percolates through the ground. When it rains, we have little geysers back there, and there's a considerable amount of water. So then that water is going to come down the road or down the drainage system and dump right next to my building on Venetia Road. And I think it's legitimate question that is going to be totally in effect to Phase One, on what is going to happen in Phase Two, because Phase One's basic. It's going to put a lot more surface water off of that property. It's going to go into, hopefully, a well-designed retention pond, unlike the one in Sienna Woods, right above my property, that when it rains, you have a trickle that turns into a three-foot wide, one-foot deep, 12-inch flow outfall on the retention pond, which in my own opinion is too big. It doesn't hold any water back. Been dealing with that for 30 years. So I am concerned on what's going to happen on Venetia Road when the water is relocated. If I'm understanding this correctly, that's why I'm asking, what is the plan and what does it really mean to reconstruct a wetlands? Does it mean that the grass that's there now is going to get wet like it does once in a while, when things don't flow like they should? Does it mean that the wetlands, obviously, that was a pond and it is filled with silt now, is pretty much cattails? Are we going to put more cattails closer to my building, and am I going to get inundated with geese and reptiles and everything else that, right now, I have a really nice cut mode field? And it's going to change the value of my property if the really nice cut mode field turns into cattails and what have you? So all I'm saying is, I have no idea what that Phase Two is going to look like on both accounts. And I think that it's a legitimate request for Phase One to clarify what the proposed Phase Two looks like.
Which I would agree, and that's kind of why we had asked you guys to discuss before today, just so that, you know, concerns could be addressed. So what's the satisfaction?
Yeah, I've not heard from Mr. Mike.
Well, the way I left here was, I can't develop this. I mean, I have, it's not my concern on how they're going to build whatever they're going to build in Phase Two. I want to know what it is they're going to do. I want to know that about that. I also want to know how they intend to cross the property owned by Lighthouse Partners to tie the sewer in. I want to know that. Nobody has contacted us at all. And you can't tell me that you're going to dump it all in an 8-inch outflow out of a residential property, the way the drawings show it right now, or a 6-inch. Maybe it's a four, I don't know. Did Gateway evaluate all of this?
Yeah.
These are legitimate for me.
We've reviewed the stormwater management for the site. Their design retention basin meets the requirements of volume and rate control, and their current outfall was into an existing wetland, which is considered a water course per the ordinance and per state requirements.
That's Phase One.
Correct, that's for Phase One.
And I'm not talking about Phase One, I'm talking about Phase Two.
Right, and for the purposes of our review, it's geared towards this application, which is Phase One. We have not reviewed in detail what the design is for Phase Two.
Yeah, I understand that. I get what you're saying. But if you do Phase One...
Yes, they do.
Phase Two's going to come up. Where's our leverage? I mean, where's my leverage right now? I mean, I have no idea what's going to happen in Phase Two.
It's on a preliminary plan. There's three lots to be...
My question is, what does this look like?
Sure. Again, it is on a preliminary plan. There's three lots to be included in that parcel. There's three lots to be included in that parcel, all of which, the roof drains, the driveways will discharge to the road, to the storm sewer collection system. So the runoff in that area is going to be substantially less.
What you have for Phase One?
And then, yeah, it will all be conveyed to the large facility. Those particularly three lots, I believe they go to the large facility, which then discharges to Peters Creek, which is, you know.
So the spring water?
It will not discharge to either your residential or your commercial property. The other concern for the reconstructed wetland on the southern parcel, we don't have that final design yet. We have it conceptually, and we have it outlined as Phase Two in that southern parcel. It's substantially larger than the wetland that's being removed. And that's something we have to work through with DEP. They like to see a, kind of an increased ratio. It'll be planted, it'll be designed to look like a meadow. It won't be moed, but, you know, it won't be cactails either. Very similar to the stormwater. I don't know if there's any newer stormwater management facilities in the area that have been designed to the newer standards, which are pretty low, you know, shallow depths with, you know, a meadow, hydric vegetation type.
Will there be standing water, or will the water be more of a floodway?
There'll be, typically, when we do a reconstructed wetland along an existing floodway, it is basically meant to kind of detour water in the event of a larger storm event and dissipate back down.
So 90% of the time, this is going to be dry. In the spring, it's going to be wet.
Relatively dry. I mean, it is still in a floodplain down there.
Does the elevation get lowered that's there right now to make this happen, or does it stay the same?
It'll likely get lowered and made to be more flat, sure.
But will the Gateway will fully engineer that and verify all that when it's submitted?
When Phase Two gets submitted, we will review Phase Two and ensure that the basin as designed still meets the volume and rate requirements. As for the reconstructed wetland, Mr. Schleicher, correct me if I'm misspeaking at all, what is driving that is, as part of Phase Two, they need to fill existing wetlands. And what's driving the reconstructed wetland is PADD requirements to offset the destructive wetlands. So there's typically a ratio that is associated with that, and you have to offset it within the same watershed, which is what they'll be doing. So we would review that from an engineering perspective to make sure that the water is managed correctly. But ultimately, that final review would also be the EP review as well.
And then just one final thing, if it, you know, puts minds at ease, is the way we have it shown right now, again, it's an outline of an area that follows a contour, it's just kind of a logical area down there. As it's shown, it's approximately 60 feet off of the property to the west, which is down, which is Mr. Mike's property, to the west of us. You know.
I think I could see it. I mean, I think I could see it, but what I really want is clarification, because I don't want to get a big surprise. You know, and I'll knock my own plan. When I look at what our homeowners association is supposed to take care of, it's not very impressive. Take a look at that pavilion down there. I mean, you can get to it.
And I think we definitely understand your concerns. The thing is, we can't have, you know, in Phase One, we can't have a full review of Phase Two until Phase Two's developed. So I think, and I know you're not getting all your questions answered, but I think we're trying to get as much as we can at this point.
I just invested a lot of money on Venetia Road, and I want to make sure that I keep my investments solid.
Absolutely. And certainly, once Phase Two is submitted, we want you back here.
I mean, this could make it nice. I mean, it could be park-like. My whole goal for that property that I have is to continue to improve to make it more park-like, you know, inviting.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that I don't have to run from a snake, because I'm afraid of snakes.
And I think our goal here is to give as many of your questions answered as you can without being able to answer every discrete issue, because we don't have the plan, and they don't, and we don't want them making statements.
I actually do understand, and I went through this already. I do have a cell phone, and it gets messages. And if you call, I will return your call. But for me to bug you for what I asked for, I don't think is my point.
And maybe they're just not there yet as well.
Yeah, wait until Phase Two comes up.
Right.
And then certainly, we can push more.
And we've already clarified some other things that Venetia Road's not getting modified for the road to come out, which, you know, that's another thing that you have to be concerned with. Something you should talk to Pendot about if you're very concerned. It's an HOP issue, Pendot, not this time. Yeah, I know how the HOP works for four cars.
Things we can do versus the things that are not within our purview either.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thanks so much.
Any other comments on this plan?
I do have just one more. If we take a look, and I just want to make sure, if Mr. Magrino isn't here, and I know he took kind of the lead on this one the last time, if we take a look at the minutes from the January 9th meeting, and I'm just looking at the paragraph, two paragraphs, three paragraphs out from staff updates, where Mr. Magrino provided an overview of the comments and questions received from the public. And I know you went through these, I'm just trying to make sure that I look at them as well with staff. Based upon the presentation given today and what you guys have seen have, because he summarized them very nicely, and they're summarized in those notes, I just want to make sure that those matters have been resolved to staff's understanding and are shown on the plans as needed in order to resolve. I think we decided that all those were resolvable, right? And I just want to make sure that your guys are good with them as well.
Did it fix the fence issue with 330?
Yeah, the demolition plan, there's a fence that was showing that was going to be demolished on the plans. That was from Mr.
Mr. Short? Mr. Short? Short, yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Mr. Short.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the fence.
Yeah.
I think, wasn't that what he brought up, was that it was showing on the plans previously that his fence was going to be gone? And then, and that's his fence.
Yeah, I don't see that any better anymore.
Okay.
I don't see something or not.
And then I know you also, what they're looking at, that you talked about increased buffers. And is that in response to the request for additional buffer landscaping between lots 121 and 112?
That is the increase, I think what you were, based on the settlement agreement between. Oh, no, we've added plantings between lot 121 and 112.
By the time.
Oh, you're talking over here.
Is that shown there?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not the best person to read these, so I just want to make sure somebody is.
They did add more plantings.
There are more there?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then fence issues resolved, we already talked about, we've talked about the wetlands question, and then the stormwater runoff into the proposed system. So now that that concerns you from a resident standpoint, Mark or Jim? Okay.
You good?
Yep.
Motion, please.
I'll make the motion, the Planning Commission recommend to council the Woodbrier Estates Residential Subdivision Final Land Development Subdivision Plan with the five staff recommendations as listed in the memo of February 6, 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is the Planning Commission decision about the Roundabout Square Site Plan.
Before we start this, is this all supposed to be dated 2025 instead of 24?
Yeah, does this still say 24? Yeah, it's just an error on our part.
Double check.
All right. The township is receipt of an application for site plan approval from Andrew Zahalski on behalf of Aaron Neemis Holdings LLC for the Roundabout Square Site Plan, proposed to be located at 801 to 821 Bebout Road. The Planning Commission previously reviewed and denied a similar plan at the same property in July of 2024. Despite the similarity, this plan is an entirely new and separate submittal, not a continuation of the previously considered plan. As such, the Planning Commission shall only consider the materials included in this submittal and not any previously provided. That all being said, the subject property extends north from the Bebout Valley Brook Roundabout along the western side of Bebout Road. It is located near the geographic center of the township, with the Orchard Highlands Residential Development situated to its north and west. Brush Run enters the property from the north and flows along its western edge. The wetland is located on the southern end of the property to the east of Brush Run. Topography drops steeply from east to west away from Bebout Road towards the Brush Run floodplain. Several utility lines run through the property. The applicant is proposing the construction of a two-story multi-tank commercial structure with a footprint of about 25,000 square feet. Development would include associated parking, landscaping, and stormwater management facilities. Existing utility lines would also be relocated as part of the development. Structure would be situated on the southern portion of the property, but north of the aforementioned wetland. It would be located in between Brush Run and Bebout Road. The submitted floor plan shows spaces for four tenants on the main level. The upper level would provide areas for storage and mechanical and electrical equipment. Eighty-six parking spaces are proposed, of which 51 would be located in a parking garage below the main floor. The majority of the remaining spaces would be north of the structure. Access to the property from Bebout Road would be via an access driveway north of the structure. Stormwater runoff would be directed into a facility south of the existing structure and east of the existing wetland. Runoff from this facility would then discharge into an unnamed tributary of Brush Run. The applicant has proposed office, medical office, and limited or counter-service restaurant as a proposed uses. All of these are permitted uses in the mixed-use activity center district. The applicant has not yet provided renderings or elevations of the proposed structure, as such compliance with several zoning regulations are impossible to determine. There are additional planned deficiencies mentioned on the screen. Prominent among them are the maneuverability concerns at the northern end of the surface parking lot, stormwater management concerns identified by Gateway, an inadequate amount of parking being provided, several issues with the landscape plan, and the need to provide an updated traffic impact study that accounts for the recently constructed roundabout. While staff cannot recommend approval of the plan right now, there is a decent amount of time until a decision must be rendered. As such, staff is recommending that the plan be tabled to allow the applicant the opportunity to correct the plan's deficiencies. And for the record, a decision must be made at or before the May 8th meeting. And we do have representatives from the applicant in attendance, and I believe they provide their own presentation they'd like to give.
Please introduce yourself.
All right, good evening. Kim Gales from JR Gales and Associates. Also have Mr. Zahalski with me this evening. As Jim stated, you know, we're approximately about 24,800 square foot of building with four different uses proposed. The parking garage, there will be parking underneath on the lower level and the second floor, which will be street level with Bebout Road, which consists of the two, the four different proposed uses, bakery, cafe, medical office, and storage for the building. A lot of the parking is underneath. The ADA spaces are underneath in the garage. There will be an elevator, so it's handicap accessible to the first floor. There's some parking outside of the, in the, off of the entrance, off of Bebout Road, and staying out of the floodplain area. Right now, we have just one sanitary sewer connection, which is right in here into the existing sanitary sewer, associated stormwater facilities, which will take the water into, this is a little oversized detention system here, this little oversized detention area here, pipe likewise up in here, and then we have the pond. We did work with staff and met with them, met with them a couple months ago, and we've rerouted, there's some drainage stormwater that comes off of Bebout Road that Pendot owns, and we're rerouting it around our pond. Previously, we had it going into our pond. So to not make things complicated between Pendot and ourselves, we're going to reroute. And Wooster's working with that. Right now, Wooster has the entrance, the only three outstanding items is approval from the township, approval from the County Conservation District, and setting the bonding and the financial security for the entrance. And then they're also working on.
That required HOP, too, right, Pendot?
Yeah, yeah. They're also working on rerouting the, there's an existing storm sewer right in around here that, from Pendot, that just dumps under our property that we're going to be rerouting around pond. So they're working with Pendot on that also, on Wooster. And also, Wooster is doing, they had previously done a parking demand study, requiring only 86 spots required, and they're updating that. They're updating their existing traffic study right now to do the recounts since Roundabout has now been built, since it had previously been done. So they couldn't be here with us tonight, but they will be coming to the next meeting. Like I had mentioned, the stormwater, we also have the pond, the oversized pipes. The consolidation plan of the five lots is in the process of being signed and reported, which needs to be done before this can move forward, is my understanding. So I think some of the outstanding things is, we are working on the architectural drawings and finalizing them to comply with your MU district. The parking demand study's being redone, Wooster's redoing the traffic counts. We've hired a landscape architect to seal the landscaping plan as required by code. We've removed some landscaping in the entrance area, so it's out of the clear site triangle. There will be some loading spots right in here to unload, and we got a door in the back, so if somebody comes in and loads in the morning, they don't have to walk around the building to unload anything necessary. I think Jim did a pretty good job on outlining everything, and I don't, you know, the board wants to, we could go through the review letters, but we're addressing them.
Are you requesting a July table, do I?
Yes, we are. Staff had, we, staff had requested we come and at least make a presentation to just keep things moving, and yeah, we're fine with the tabling.
You're fine tabling.
Yeah.
You got the dates up? You said, what did you say, May?
May. They have until the May meeting to, you have until.
They have until the May meeting to, you have until the May meeting to make a decision on this.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions before you can figure on that. But going back to the parking, which to me is a big flag, red flag. And you say that you have, is it Wooster doing a parking demand study?
Yes, they had done one previously.
Yeah. Now, these demand studies, and I'm going to ask you guys, is this something that we just call out except? Or can we inject our own little concerns to whatever study? They may say, come back and say, yeah, you know, you need 139 or 125. But they could come back and say, you only need 85 instead of 89. So is that something we take on face value or can we?
Would they have to get a variance?
Well, first of all, presumably, Mike, you'd review that study that Wooster had produced, right?
Right, so you'd have to speak first, but what's in the code for the requirement? Does it say?
The code requirement study?
Or is there a rate that they have to hit?
There's a rate, but that can be, they can have the lower amount if they produce this study.
Right. So the zoning ordinance allows a study to go lower than what's in the code. So they don't have to get a variance. So they can submit a study and we can review it. And then if I can recommend to you and say, oh, I agree with this study. And then if you agree with that, you can say yes. They don't need a zoning variance. My biggest concern is, and you mentioned another square footage tonight, there's four square footages on the building size. And I'm trying to figure out, like, there's a square footage in the traffic study. There was a square footage for the parking calculation on the land development cover sheet. And then down below, there was another square footage. And you've mentioned another one tonight. Like, whatever the square footage is, can we, there's got to be one set of square footages that all the traffic and all the parking and all these uses were proposing, because they're different everywhere.
It's 248.
But then whatever these breakdowns are, because the traffic study breaks it down one way, the cover of the land development plan had it. And then when you did the parking calculation, it was totally, like, none of this stuff's matching. So it all has to match at some point. Otherwise, I can't tell you what it is. And I can't tell you what the parking number if I agree with it. And I can't calculate the impact fee. Otherwise, I'm just going to pick the highest one and tell you that's the impact fee. So all this stuff has to like.
Am I?
So to that point, if they can give me the number of what it is, I can take a look at it. I can come back to you and say, based on what they're showing me.
This is reasonable, this is.
Yeah.
And following up on that, I mean, do you need to know the exact uses rather than this? And how many square foot are the exact uses?
That helps because of a breakdown. Like, they need to tell me at least what they're proposing. Because there's a big difference between like a medical office versus like. They're talking like bakeries and retails and all these other things.
Restaurants or cafes.
And that's part of.
Do you need that to do your calculation?
Yes. And then we need to, we need to be able to say, okay, are we going to accept that? Because, you know, they don't actually have real users in there. So we have to say, we're going to have to accept that that's what we're going to settle on. Because theoretically, you know, they could build the building and something totally different can come in. So, you know, do you want to accept what they're talking about? Or you wanted to say, well, no, you should be really doing the worst case.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
And then that's the distinction is whether the calculations will say one number. Let's just say there says another number. And then we have the option, or from a recommendation standpoint of saying, well, just as a basis for recommending approval or not recommending approval, we think that should be with what the calculations say. Or we agree with what number they say. Or we can say like, we think it's a number somewhere in the middle, right? And that can be part of our recommendation either way, once it comes back to us. Is that right?
And somehow, and I did look back, and I know we've done this in the past, when we've accepted these parking studies, where we put as a condition of approval, and somehow it's gone on the recorded plan, that, you know, this number of spaces corresponds to these types of uses. And if somebody comes in for an occupancy change 10 years from now, when we're all long gone, like, they have to come in with a new study to try to justify if that use falls within what was approved originally. We try to put some kind of condition, so down the road.
And so you're not doing your own parking study, but you are critiquing and analyzing.
I'm critiquing someone else what they're submitting.
As far as whether you agree with it or where you would, and then you'll make a recommendation, let's say, and say like, well, I don't think it should be 85 spaces, but it probably doesn't need to be 120 spaces.
But it's just like a traffic study. It's just like there's a trip generation manual, there's a parking generation manual. And there's studies of parking that we rely on. It's not just.
It's sometimes empirical numbers.
Yeah, where there's empirical, historical data of all this, yes.
Right, right, okay. I did have a question. When we talked months ago about making amendments and having minimum requirements, you know, for a plan to be accepted, those all went through, right?
Yes.
And then so was there an announce, I'm just looking, just the?
Mark and I sat down and went over.
Number deficiencies?
We've sat down, went over everything that was submitted. We gave an opportunity to correct any deficiencies, and they submitted a complete application.
So the application was complete?
Yes.
And the deficiencies are just deficiencies within the content of that application?
Yes. Not, there's a difference between administratively, we deferred between administratively complete and actually complete.
To accept the application, start the clock versus where we were before?
Correct.
Right, with other ones? Okay, thank you.
Can I just have a follow-up to my comment is, you know, where the staff says that we're, somebody, the zoning officer who said there's 39 spaces still need to be provided, although we're going to be looking at a parking demand study. And then the next bullet says that the surface parking lot can likely seat 200 feet, but yet this one is 221 feet. So it's like I'm trying to figure out where we're going to squeeze, you know, any more parking spaces and when the parking lot already is too long. So, you know, I just pointing out some red flags. You've read these?
Yes.
And I'm just, I'm just highlighting them from, I've been in too many parking lots. Some of the parking lots we have in the township, I'm just appalled that we let some of them get through. I just can't, I can't find a parking space and I can't move maneuver in the parking lot. So I'm getting a little tired of having too small parking spaces in some of these developments we're approving.
Another question for staff. So I had seen in one of these documents, there were questions about accessibility for emergency vehicles. Is there a point at which we'll have that reviewed as well? Or does the emergency, does the fire chief or someone come to the meeting and?
Well, the fire chief typically reviews the maneuverability. And Mike can talk more about the audit and templates and everything.
I think Wooster will be resubmitting the templates.
Yeah, and not to stop you. I mean, the only thing that I had was, we need the fire chief to say, is it acceptable? Because the truck will have to go all the way around the building. But obviously, it's going head in and it'll have to back out. And we wanted to see if that was, in his opinion, acceptable access to go all the way in. Same way with the garbage trucks. I think there was a point on here we talked about with the garbage truck. If it's a front loader, is it going to be able to, you're going to have to have Wooster show, can it pull in, front load, dump? And then how's it going to, they got to show it backing, turning around in that area.
Okay.
So I don't know if it can pull in frontwise, dump, and then back.
Okay.
Because I think you're going to need, you're going to have a front-loading one for this type of building. You're not going to have one of them nifty side guys that does them from the side.
Agreed.
So.
Okay.
And I assume then the fire chief doesn't, I mean, I saw that there's comments in here from him already, but there's nothing really for him to analyze until we have a lot more information. Is that?
At this time, yeah.
Right, okay, okay.
So if we can get, we get back to like May 8th, whatever that meeting's going to be. A lot of this is not complete still.
We can request an extension.
We vote up for that.
Or we request that they give us an extension.
You have to render a decision by the May meeting. Otherwise, it could be a deemed approval. So if it's not the point where we feel it's ready, we would recommend denial at that stage.
Gotcha.
Could we, could we request an extension? I mean, we've come.
Subject to a vote.
Subject to a vote, understood.
Do you want to request an extension beyond that date right now?
We'd love to. It's up to the board.
It's brand new.
We're.
Absolutely.
We do have three.
Yeah.
I agree. But if that would be open to the board in the future.
Yeah, all right. Thanks, Kim. You guys got a lot of work happening. And hopefully come back next time with something that may be realistic.
We have, you know, the architectural is back engaged in, to address some of the architectural concerns and what you want, you know, what do you want the voting to look at with the mixed use and so forth. And Wooster's on their way. So we had requested to be tabled tonight, not appear, but staff just wanted to come and have you guys voice your opinions and give us any feedback at this point. No problem.
To call some audience comments, however, I do want to let the audience know that this plan is very far from reality. They have so many problems currently with their engineering, and our staff has numerous issues with it. So, I mean, it could look completely different on May 8th or whenever they come back. So, but you're more than welcome to, you know, say your piece, but it could look completely different in the future. There's so many deficiencies right now.
And we will be back here. So no matter what, there will be other opportunities.
To talk about.
Not to tell anybody not to speak, but there will be other opportunities.
Hi, Barb Varani. I'm at 138 Highview in Orchard Highlands. My question is, do I get one of these letters of notification of a meeting every single time this subject is going to be in front of you?
Staff?
We typically only send it at the beginning, and we leave it up to the residents to follow up on the matter.
So that's a no?
At this time, yes. At this time, that's a no.
Jim, can we change that for this?
If you would.
This is so critical of these neighbors.
Upon your request, I'm sure we can do that, yes.
I request that, please.
Okay.
For the entire neighborhood.
We'll be sure to do that.
Thank you.
We request it.
Sorry, I'm still writing my street.
Yeah, you're fine.
Can I have a second question? Did I have a second question? I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the middle here?
May I, I'll do, give an opinion?
Sure, please state your name, address.
It's Brandon Hudok, 236 Ridgeview in Orchard Highlands.
Can you write it, can you just sign up?
Yes.
You know how far.
As you're talking, sign or before, after.
So there's a point of diminishing returns. Our township is feeling more and more generic and soulless. Such undeveloped spaces have tremendous value. Not only do they buffer noise, they keep air cleaner, they keep the water cleaner, give wildlife a place to live. They add value. They allow for more peaceful, enjoyable, quiet living for existing residents here in Peters. You take these calm spaces away and you put generic, soulless entities, you take away the percentage of desirability value of our neighborhood, our homes, and our township. Honestly, if such a plan were to move forward, I feel like you're lessening the value of our homes. If such a plan were to move forward, I'd like to request that all residents within a quarter mile of the development be given 50% off their township taxes for a period of 40 years. And anybody that has property adjacent or within line of sight be given exemption from township taxes for a period, full exemption from township taxes for a period of 40 years. Such businesses going in there are probably going to be, they're not going to be mom and pop, humble businesses or wholesome businesses. They're probably going to be soulless corporate entities. And if you were to call them, you'd probably spend at least 10 to 20 minutes on the telephone prompts just to get a real person who doesn't live in the area, doesn't know the area, and isn't even able to help you. I ask that the township put the needs of the many and the residents above the desires of the few. I ask the township, please protect us, the residents, and those that need protecting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the side?
I'll make a motion to table the, what do you want me to do? I'll make a motion to table the Zalinski, how, Zalinski Plan.
Roundabout Square.
Roundabout Square.
The Zalinski Roundabout Square. I turned the page already.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jim, is there anything else that, staff comments?
I don't have anything. Mark is the one that you may do the RFP.
Oh, we have staff, staff updated, yes. We have, we finally closed on the RFP for the comprehensive plan update. We do have nine applicants that we'll be reviewing through. Our two members who are on the steering committee, Rochelle and.
John Johnson.
Will probably be reviewing those, be attending interviews of the selected committee, or selected applicants that will be looking to interview. We're going to be doing that sometime in early March. So we'll let you know when that is, and we'll coordinate our schedules.
Anything else?
Yeah, I want to circle back to the alternates. They aren't part of the five members if two of our members aren't here.
That's how the MPC is worded. They're only supposed, they're only supposed to vote if it's necessary for a quorum. So for example, say you weren't here tonight, and it was just Jeff and Rochelle as the regular members. John would then be a voting member, Ben Leslie would still be an alternate.
All right, that.
It's different than last year, but. That's, quite frankly, yes, that's very different from how things have operated here or even.
It just changed with the passage of.
Well, it's been the same rule, but I always voted before as well until, or I voiced my vote, but it wasn't.
This was kind of the practice here when I got here, and I didn't really want to roll a vote or anything.
Okay, okay, clarity, that's good.
And that's it? All right, meeting adjourned.